Okay, I want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. There's quite a few empty seats, but sometimes that happens during the summer. So hopefully it goes well. So. I will now open the Estacada City Council meeting if you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, and in this law that will never be in justice for all.
Okay, can I have roll call, please?
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here, thank you very much for that. Okay, moving along to the first citizen and community group comment, I have Ben Spillamo, which is to speak. And you want to speak on something we've already looked at in the last city council meeting, am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to touch on the topic of PG&E raising their rates for. Overall, right? And a lot of the questions that were asked from the council, I don't think really got to the root of the issue with PG&E. You know, they're a company, last year made a hundred and a quarter of a billion dollars after. Taxes, you know, net profit of a quarter of a billion dollars. They paid their shareholder, they paid dividends in twenty-three of a hundred and eighty million dollars and twenty-two of a hundred and fifty-eight million. And then in twenty-one of a hundred and fifty million dollars while also doing common stock buybacks. And all of those, all they do are retain shareholder price, you know, the stock price because it's a publicly traded company. And the company, we live in America, they're allowed to do what they want with their profits. But they are using the, I would call the excuse of improving capital expenditures. To justify raising a rate. When they're making record profits while also giving tons of money back to their shareholders. And the people footing the bill are the people who live here. And that's the, to me, that's the real reason for the eighteen percent increase. You know, the financial assistance stuff, you know, whether low income people are able to get financial assistance and it kind of re-spreads it. The rest of the cost back to everyone else. I don't see that as that big of an issue. I see it more of like a prime example of just trying to maintain a stock price at the expense of everyone who lives within the, essentially the monopoly of PG&E. Because there are no competitors. So to me, that I would like. I would like to know how they would justify doing stock buybacks and doing that much in dividends while also increasing the rates to people who live in the community. And I forget the name of the board that has the meeting, but I would happily go talk to them too if. So I'll look into actually speaking to them directly about it. But to me, that's the kind of questions I would have liked to see asked of PG&E instead of some of the questions that were asked.
Okay, thank you. All right, next I have Shirley Burke.
I have the same old story, the stop sign on Tenth and Broadway. Okay, we almost had another kid hit the other day crossing crosswalk, somebody came out of Campanella's going about thirty. And didn't stop, and I thought the dad was going to pull him out and beat him. So also, and then the speed limit on the highway, the twenty-five mile an hour zone. It's been a year to date that, that county was here and we talked about that. And he says, well, the city doesn't own that, the county does. And then I was told at that time it'd take nine months to get that stop sign down to River Mill. That stop sign still isn't there. And the forty-five mile an hour zone to the stop sign is maybe twenty-five, fifty feet between each of them. If they can't, they can take that twenty-five. Stop sign and put it where that forty-five is very easily by unscrewing it. It needs to be slowed down. A lot of people are using it slowing it down when they leave River Mill. But it needs to be done. Otherwise, they're just going to keep coming. And especially at night. I give up at night because I lay in bed and I can just hear them going about fifty, sixty miles an hour through there revving it up. So please get that stop sign moved, put in, and that speed limit.
Can I speak to that a little bit? Because I'm not sure exactly what stop sign you're talking about moving.
Stop sign on Tenth and Broadway.
At Tenth and Broadway.
You know, we're coming into the school zone from Camp, into the school zone from Campanella's.
Uh huh.
Oh, this tent and then we're on Broadway.
Uh huh.
And the street that turns to.
You want it to be like a three-way stop.
Three-way stop.
The request, okay, we could, we could add that to the list of things to look at. And I do have good news on the, the speed zone. I just signed, we just got the speed study back and I just signed off on that. After reviewing it with staff to send back to the county, they'll look at it and they're going to. I didn't put it in my report, so I should, I'll make a note to report on that, but they are going to slow the speed. I believe it's from, from Deuce, it'll be forty coming in and then before it hit the River Mill intersection, it would go to thirty-five. I'm just going off my memory and then it'd be thirty-five towards Hillway and hit twenty, about twenty-five about there. So they're letting us step it down as we're coming into town, but I will make a note to report on that at the next meeting.
That's kind of crazy to have three different speed limits on that sign within that amount of time. I mean.
From Deuce Road?
Huh?
All the way from Deuce.
From Deuce Road to River Mills, you know, that would be fine, but then from there. From there to town would be, should be twenty-five. It's twenty-five from, from the corner of Sixth and Wade out to pass Campanella's Estates. And so that's fine.
I'll give a report on that.
It wouldn't be a three-way stop, it would be, what did I say, one? It would be a two-way stop. It'd be the one coming off of Broadway. Come down Broadway and coming off Tent, that's two stop signs. You can't make it a three-way stop because it's going to block the traffic, the school traffic coming out, going home or whatever.
We'll, we'll have to look at that, that situation there. I will, I can, I'll give a report about what the speed study found that the county did.
We thought about a three-way, but then we figured it would block their school down and the buses, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all I have for citizen and community group comments. We will now go on to the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read the consent agenda. Is there anything, any questions you'd like to ask or anything you'd like to move before we agree upon? Okay, can I have a motion on the floor for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, I have a first, do I have a second? First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much for that. We will now go to department committee reports. Do any of you have a report from your committees?
Yeah, Arts Commission and Downtown Estacada Commission are going to collaborate on the Christmas tree lighting. Some very good ideas coming out with changing it up and, you know, making it a, an event, a bigger event than what we've made it in the past. A family-friendly fun event with, with the possibility of a hallmark moment. So it's kind of exciting. Both of the, both of those committees have really taken on to the, taken on the idea of doing something grand for the one hundred and twenty. Anniversary, one hundred and twentieth year anniversary of Estacada. Excuse me. The Arts Commission's going to design or going to work on designing a logo that can be reused. You know, reused over and over. The only thing that changes are the numbers. Every five years is what the idea is, one-twenty, then one-twenty-five, then one-thirty. Just to celebrate, you know, this amazing, amazing little town and what we've, you know, what we've grown here. But yeah, I mean, they're, you know, hopefully, hopefully the other committees latch on and they want to do something for the, for one hundred and twenty, at least at one of their events. Downtown Estacada Commission wants to do it. They want it to be a whole year-long thing. Every event that they put on, especially the Fourth of July parade, so. Yeah, that's what I got.
Sounds good.
Traffic and Public Safety, Matt, there was an array of things discussed, but to highlight the things we were presented from Melanie and the staff. Their idea of a speed bump policy. After a lot of deliberation back and forth, it was just recommended that they take it home. And spend time with this so that we can do this right, not rush a product. I, I recommended that before they continue, because it could have turned into several hour conversations, as you can imagine, on slope percentages and different things like that. And I, I will share that one thing in there that was a little concerning to me initially, and this is just from reading it. And I know that this was expressed through several members on that community was the who's going to pay for it. And I think. Without question, the city's going to pay for it is the way I see this. This is something we're trying to implement. I would say if, maybe on some of the private drive and things like that, but if we're talking like in the developments of Campanella or Cascadia Ridge or even the new ones that are being put in. I, I don't, I don't think it should be a question of is the community going to pay for a speed bump to be placed there for something that we missed initially to begin with. So I know that that was shared concern, but I'm curious to see what they come back with on their own. And then I actually removed myself from table of discussion until it's brought to us from their recommendations. That way I could discuss with you guys more appropriately, so on my personal. And then it was brought up again about RV parking. Just where people are parking their RVs, the rules. Since then, Melanie has contacted me and we've actually spoke about. She's looking at that rule. It's something that the city's had on their log of things to do. It just unfortunately gets lost in other things that are a little bit more important, if you will, or just more time sensitive. So it's something that they're looking at. Do we go to a seventy-four or seventy-two hour a month, seventy-two hour a week? Or do we remove it? Or do like as far as, I mean, Melanie, I think you're going to comment on this more later, but essentially do we take, do we just say no RV parking on the street? But then be loose about it for understanding that people are maybe pulling their trailer in to get it ready for the weekend or plug their fridge in for overnight or something before they leave. So there was options there, but it's being addressed. And then the police and speed for town, and this is more of a comment for everybody else's. We spoke with Lieutenant Mendoza, Chief Mendoza about that, and they've been radaring for. They've been actually radaring for, so to slow down the hill, that's something that we can do immediately. Then also they've been radaring the school zones, parking like in between, let's just say the middle school of Clapham's River. And they are literally starting to radar people and their intent is they're going to do a campaign to up where they're actually issuing tickets this summer. So I asked with Melanie that we maybe inform people so that it's not a sticker shop, but we've been kind of alluding to this is coming. Please slow down, please slow down, please slow down. So that, just to put it on your radar. There's going to be speed enforcement to include, it sounds like some of these motorcycle traffic teams are going to be coming out here and getting more involved and things like that. So lots going on in that.
I didn't have anything.
The DEIC met last week, they had another productive meeting. One thing that they wanted to do is they were presented with the speed humps issue and they would like to work on it further. And they are focusing on working on a drug abuse prevention campaign, so they're going to collaborate with other, other agencies and whatnot and see what they present. So they, that it's an overall picture that everybody can get. They are, they're doing really good work on that. They would also like to, the council to consider the name change that they voted on last year. They chose Better Together, but they're open to any name that includes DEI language for ease of applying for grants. But they would like their name to focus on the inclusion aspect of their mission.
Met with the library, they, they continue to thrive. They're doing great. The, the number of folks getting cards is up, number of people checking out, stuff is up, people coming in, that's up, fines are up as well too. And then they've got a lot of great employees now, very engaged with the community, very impressed with the group that they've got there now. So I encourage you to go out and check out the activities that they've got coming up and I wanted to highlight one. This is a hit every year. It's their summer reading program and it starts June fourteenth and runs through August fifteenth. And we've got different age groups here. They got the littles, which is zero to five, and I learned something here. Kids aged six to twelve, teens thirteen to eighteen, and for the readers in this room. Adults eighteen and over, we can participate as well too. There are prizes, raffles and everything. So get to the library, get signed up, pick your books out. There's some good ones coming out this summer and be a part of the library.
Yeah, so I was not able to attend Parks and Rec in person. Both my kids had their track banquet right at the same time and I was at that instead. However, I was fortunate enough to watch it online and so I'll just kind of hit the high points. Parks and Rec discussed art, art in the park and that was a success. Sounded like there were about fourteen people, fourteen kiddos that showed up for that. And I'm hoping that there will be a bigger turnout next year. Maybe the, maybe a little bit was, had to do with the weather, but I'm hoping, hoping it will be a bigger turnout. The Ranger Woods cleanup will be June first from ten to one PM and the cleanup is just basically taking off that ivy that's growing on the trees. And it sounds like that there will be, if people want to participate in that, that there will be parking in the high school parking lot. And also Sunday, June thirtieth from two to four is going to kick off the concert series. Over at the amphitheater in Wade Creek and there's going to be an ice cream truck, Christie's and kettle corn. And it sounded like they were trying to get a few more vendors out and. Then there also was discussion of the SDC survey. A lot of the meeting was focused on just going over what they want to present to the public as far as what they want to see on the survey. In regards to what they want to see in their city parks, what's more important to the community in regards to city parks. So that is just the high points of Parks and Rec and I will be at School District this Wednesday. So I'll come back with School District next time. That's it.
Thank you.
What's that?
It's a new bond because.
Man.
Melanie.
Okay, my turn?
Yep, you're up.
Okay, I have a little presentation we'll throw up on the screen. This is actually, should have changed the title there, but it's City Manager, City Attorney. We're going to tag team it a little bit. So first of all, I, next slide please, I wanted to say thank you to everybody who attended the town hall that was on May twentieth. Thought that was great questions, great conversation. And it's nice, I think, for you as the council to be able to have a little more relaxed time with no time limits and not trying to get through city business. Just to be able to have conversation with people and answer questions. I thought it was great. So thank you for that. Next slide. Main Street Enhancement Project is getting close to wrapping up. Today it was closed for paving between first at the top of the hill and third at the bottom of the hill. And that was, they're doing that last section connecting the Uptown project that was completed last summer, was that last summer? I can't remember when, just recently. And then the connecting it with this downtown project. So between that, streetlights getting installed next week. PGE will have to come out and energize things still after that. But their details are wrapping up, including some final concrete. They've been doing the pave backs or whatever that's called. They get that each driveway. They've been doing that. We are going to have a ribbon cutting on July fourth. Everyone is invited. I know everybody probably has their favorite place to sit to watch the parade. But we will be at, down here on the corner by Yo Treats and Chapman's Three One at Fourth. And the mayor will be cutting the ribbon as the parade is coming down the hill. So I think it'll be a great photo op and showing off the, the good work that's been done out there. So ten AM or very shortly thereafter. I know that once that parade starts, it, it keeps moving, so. Yeah, so everybody's invited. Okay, next slide. All right, and I was asked this question, wanted to follow up on it. So this is a little bit of history on wastewater treatment plant through the years. Question was what was the wastewater treatment plant built to process? And how did, I added this, how did the upgrade in nineteen eighty-nine increase the capacity? So next slide, here is a little photo, you can't quite see the top of it there, but. The photo, I should guess I should go to mine, was, that's a aerial view. I don't even know how they got it back in nineteen sixty-five. But we have many years before that too. So you can see in the little red box on the top right, that's where the wastewater treatment plant was built in nineteen sixty-two. And it had a design capacity of point three, four, five million gallons a day. So that's usually the, that's the dry weather when it doesn't have extra flow coming through. And then the peak capacity was just over half a million gallons a day. So pretty tiny in comparison.
What does that mean numbers wise? If you were to put that to residents, what was its capacity?
The number of residents? I'm sorry, I did not tie that to the number of residents. But I do have, I have kept track of like what the population was through the years. I can't remember what it, I think it was like in the around twelve hundred people back then. But I didn't tie it to like how many people is that? But if you go to the next slide, it kind of shows you where we're at. So in nineteen eighty-nine, they did a major upgrade to the plant. They increased the average, that design flow, the dry weather flow to just over, it was point three before. Point three, four, five, now it's up to point five, four, zero. And their peak capacity went from half a million gallons up to four and a half million gallons. And that peak capacity is really what we see that in the wintertime or in the rainy season. When the, there's inflow into the pipes and the treatment plant is processing more water than just what's coming through the sewer. It's all the water that's getting into the system. So I showed you, I have listed here the last four years, twenty, on the left, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. The average dry weather flow, which is like from May to October. Was, was eleven point three, six million gallons in the month. So when you round, divide that by thirty days, it's just an estimate that we're at about point three, seven, eight. And then point three, four, three in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, that was that really wet year. Remember when it rained the whole month of June, I think? And so that, the flows were up on the average. And then twenty twenty-three, we were. About half a million gallons a day. So we're, we're close to that point five, four million gallons a day is what it's supposed to be on the average during the dry weather. But if you go to the next slide. That shows you since two thousand and five is the first number. And you'll be able to see that better and I'll send this presentation to you. But it goes up through twenty twenty-three and you can see how each year, it's, it's not like. It's fairly random, but if you look at that trend line, the dotted trend line, it is trending up. And we know it's going to continue to trend up, but the actual numbers of, that's the million gallons per year treated. Is kind of all over the board. In a general up direction. So just wanted to share that with you. A lot of the issues we're having right now with the wastewater plant have to do with the loading of it. And the biological processes, that's what we were experiencing last fall with all the odor that was happening. I'm thinking that's not going to happen this year with the new dehydration, the screw press, that it's a different method of processing the solids. And so I think, I think that has helped a lot, but we will find out. And that process will be transferred over to the new plant. So I just kind of wanted, I don't know if that completely answers your question. It shows you what it was built for.
It gives us, it gives me the flow. It gives me all that stuff. That's great. I get that. But I still need a number, looking for the number that it was meant to handle when it was built. And that's really what I'm looking for here.
Like the population number.
What was that plant meant to handle originally?
Well, it was, they. It was meant to handle point three, four, five million gallons. So less a third of a million gallons a day is all it was meant to handle during the dry season. And like I said, there was around twelve hundred people in town back then.
But is that the number it was built to handle?
I do not know. They did, I don't know if it breaks down. Do you know, Peter, if it breaks down?
Because you have industrial users too. So depending on industry and depending on how much the mill was putting into the system. I mean, those all would be factors. So they, they. Because the commercial property compared to industrial property compared to residential properties. I mean, it's, it's the mix of that that determines how much water you have. So like in Dundee, we would have wineries would wash all their stuff at once and we'd have huge flows during those days. We had to coordinate them because it would overwhelm the system. So it depends on, yeah, it just depends on who's part of the sewage system in the city.
Does our new plant have a count on what it's supposed to handle? As far as residents go in the, in the city?
Yes, it was. Well, they're estimating, you want to jump in here, Elena?
Yeah, sure. I, I mean, we looked at what, what, what our estimate for population is supposed to be in the next twenty to thirty years. And we based the flows on that.
On the twenty, yeah, on the twenty years.
Twenty-year estimate.
So it's like ten thousand.
I want to say it was like thirteen thousand.
I think it was. I can look at.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look it up.
Plan for that, but I can do that.
I think that before we get to that point, you know, we'll reach the, the total number that we can build within the UGB. We'll probably start to kind of slow off that growth once we reach that point.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, so the land within UGB, because then you'd have to do UGB expansion and that's a whole other process. Yeah, so we're not, we're not even, I'm just saying when we get to like.
Be a number here, guys. I, I know you're trying to do the best you can with the flows and stuff. I get that, but there's, when you build a plant, and I know this for a fact. There's a number, there's a number that it's meant to hold, that it's meant to take care of. That's just the way they build plants. I mean, PGE builds a system knowing how many customers they can serve. So when we build a plant like this, I'd like a number, a clear number as to what this plant can, can do. Because we spent a lot of money and going out, it's, it's easier for me to talk to people. I can tell them, this is what this plant's meant to hold. We've got a long time, people. We are in good shape. Instead of just giving them, well, the flows were this and this and this, that's, that doesn't, that doesn't.
Translates to what people understand. Okay.
Well, the, the original compared to nineteen eighty-nine, the increase was nine X. So we went from a half million to four point five as the capacity. And, and I don't know what drove their decision to build it four and a half. I mean, population growth, but yeah.
All right, when I asked our engineers what the plant was designed for, I asked what the plant was designed for. I didn't ask for population specifically. So I will see if that can.
I don't know how you would even separate that out though.
Not quite sure, but.
I was thinking the same thing.
Because I guess you could say what the average use is for a storm bill for, for residents. But if you divide that by the total capacity to get the number of residents, you're not taking into account the uses from industrial users or anyone that's putting large loads on the system.
Which is bigger.
So you could say, you could give a number for, okay, it'll handle this many houses as long as there's no money used, no other users but residents. But if you're going to include all of the users, the only way to, to give them a number is to get millions of gallons per day. Because that doesn't separate, doesn't differentiate between the two users.
I'm not talking industry here. I'm, that's not even in the play. I'm talking residential. Residents of the city of Estacada, what was the plant made to handle originally residents? I'm not including industrial, and sure, industrial will come into this and that'll make a difference in the flows and everything that goes out. What I'm asking for is a number. It's like the highway system. It's like the electric system. You know how many people can get on that line and use it at one time.
Absent the industrial users?
Yeah.
Is what you're saying? If there was no industrial users ever that ever used the system?
I can do some kind of math.
Well, there, there, the problem is there's so many factors, like whether people's gutter system is plugged into the sewage system. So if like rainwater is going into versus there's some people that their downspouts go into their yard. We can, maybe the library has an article. I mean, maybe when they opened it, they had.
Try to see.
That's something you can check with the engineers and get back to us on.
Yeah, and, and maybe some math, like if we know, like we're just talking about how much water folks are using. If we know, like if I do a January number, I can tell what the average.
You can either say it with the person that's choosing too much.
Yeah, I get, well, a lot of that's going in the outside, so it's not going to the sewer plant. But if it's in, if it's internal in the house, you know, like in January, the water people use, then I could say this is how much they're using on a daily basis. This is how many people we, this is how much you can expect to be going from users. But it doesn't account then for the inflow that gets into the system other, like you're saying, other ways, but.
So I looked at the thirty percent design preliminary design report for the new plant. And their flow projections based on population through twenty fifty-three is twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty people.
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you, Elena.
That's on the new one.
That's on, that's on the new plant.
Twelve thousand, what was that?
Twelve thousand, seven. Twelve thousand seven hundred and forty.
Okay.
That's the number I can write.
And I will see if I can find out in nineteen sixty-two or whenever that was. Uh, what was it built for? We must have a, we must.
There's gotta be a number out there, yeah.
All right.
And if nothing else, you know what the total capacity of the new system is with twelve thousand seven hundred and forty people? You can just do a ratio there and apply it to the volume back then and get an estimate if they don't have it.
True. Okay, I will come back with that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then next slide, just a quick update on the wastewater facility. We're moving forward with the not, design, engineering and procurement. And the resolution to authorize expanding our design loan into a construction loan was approved this evening in the consent agenda, so we'll be working on that. And we're exploring a program that could lower the interest rate. We need to gather more information. I'm going to let. Peter talk a little about if you want to share any more information on that, but Elena's been working on it a lot. There's no certainties, so we don't, can't really discuss it tonight because they don't have, I don't have answers for you. But we do need to gather more information and come back and talk to you.
So there's a, there's a kind of a. D E Q E P A program that would result in lowering our interest rate by a point. But the, right now with the information that we have and the process that we have. Um, we don't currently qualify for that. It's possible we could qualify for it, but we would. It, the amount of time it would take to get there. Um, we need to figure out and we have, we have some answers, but not a lot. And so what we're going to do is gather as much information as we can and then bring it back for you guys to consider. And kind of do like a, look at the strengths, weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats associated with doing it. And then the other thing is, I'm reaching out to a couple of federal officials and seeing if um. Trying to gauge the, what the odds are of us getting it. So I mean, if it's ninety-five percent, then that might justify delays if, if we're. If we really don't have a, a reasonable chance of getting it, then um. It probably doesn't make sense to spend a huge amount of time. So we're trying to just gauge A, our eligibility and then the amount of additional work as far as planning. And delays procurement in order to opt into it. And um, hopefully we'll have that information for you in a couple of weeks. This, the conversation was on Friday, so. Um, we'll be gathering as much information as possible.
We don't want to delay because we don't, we want to know right away if we could, we'd like to discuss it tonight. But we just, like he said, the conversation was on Friday and we just need to get some more facts together for you.
Did you do the map on what the one percent savings? I mean, it's got to be tens of millions of dollars.
It's like eight million.
It's like eight straight out over thirty years. But that doesn't take into consideration um, the extra costs that would be incurred by the delay. So that's why we need to put together that information, so it's, we're not just.
And then we were already, we were already coming up on D E Q timelines. So we need to make sure that if, if we're pursuing this with their cooperation, that they're pausing the clock. On our completion so that we don't get penalized for pursuing their program.
So that's a, um, to be continued, that leaves you hanging a little bit.
So we, we are.
But some information back to you.
There's no current planned delay. We're planning to proceed if we get really positive information. Like that, you know, there's a ninety percent probability or something like that and it's going to take this amount of time and it's going to cost. X amount in reporting, um, then we'll bring that back and you guys can make a decision on whether that's kind of the course action you want to take or not.
Okay, and last topic, unless you have questions, garbage and yard debris update.
So we had a, another meeting. And our, our garbage rate was not increased last year, um, but. Yeah, just a very modest increase. Um, there probably is, is going to be an increase this year. Just based on the, the preliminary numbers that we've seen, they're finalizing the numbers and we're going to look at options. Um, so the yard debris, we're continuing to have a conversation. So there are a couple of issues. One is that to get the ninety gallon bins. That's a capital investment on the part of the, a part of the garbage companies. And they have to order those and it's going to take a certain amount of time to get them. Um, Arrow is actually working with Walker to see if they can figure out a solution. Um, like Walker running one of Arrow's trucks perhaps. I mean, they're, they're taking a pretty broad look at how they can make it happen. Because with ninety gallon containers, to not have a side loader or a back loader. To try and manually load that yard debris into a um, truck, I think would be pretty challenging. And their current trucks, um, as I understand it, don't have that equipment. And then also, um, they too would have to make that capital investment of the bins. And so we want to, we're trying to have conversations with them about can you perform this service? And you know, I think um, they're optimistic about things. But we need to make sure that their optimism is grounded in the reality of. You know, ninety gallons worth of grass. I used to have a big, at one point I had a big yard that I would mow and um, just carrying the bags from the um. Mower was sometimes really heavy and then I can't, enrolling the big green thing to the end of the driveway was heavy. And, and I can't imagine trying to lift that into a, of course, I'm not as big as the garbage guys. Um, but, and don't work out as much, but um, yeah, so we, we want to make sure it's viable. Because we don't want is a service that's available to two thirds or three quarters of the city and not to the rest.
They've looked at others um, options too, as far as possibly one provider doing the entire city. And there's been, when you get into the details of it, then it gets complicated as, and we want it to be, once, we want it to get rolling and we want it to be successful. We don't want it to be um, a source of frustration. So we're meeting again with them next week. And um, Peter and I are working on that in the meantime. Also, Ten Bush.
Would it, would it be more cost effective to have just a, a, a central place for people to bring their yard debris? Or, you know, like, like what we had down at Portal Park, you know, would it be more cost effective to, to have something like that? Rather than it on, in everybody's driveway? Um, I mean, with the, I, I'd like to see what the cost comparison would be to doing something like that, something more centralized. Um, where everybody can just, everybody can just go to it, you know? I understand the, the whole garbage and the yard debris thing trouble that, that we had. But um, I just, I would like to see that cost comparison rather than um, you know, just everybody on their. In their driveway.
That I could, we could look at what I, what, what it's cost us in the past to do that. Um, my concern is that it's, it's hard for people. Some people can't get their stuff down there. So we, but we, that might be what we end up with in the interim for the summer.
Um, so what's driving this is just overwhelmingly demand for curbside. So we got like three hundred responses, um, which is. Far higher than our usual response way for people in the city regularly has gotten calls from new folks that move here. And they're like, yeah, we saw, where's our, we haven't gotten our, you know, yard debris bin yet. So um, there's already significant demand and the trend seems to be. Um, people really wanting that service. And we're unique in that we have our franchise agreements with, I'll call them trash haulers, because I think that's what our. Um, that's what our agreement calls them. But um, it's really unusual for a town this size to have two haulers. Uh, particularly when one's a national company and one's local. And then, you know, trying to craft something that's fair to everybody has been. I think more challenging than we anticipated when we started working on this.
So could we, could we have Arrow do it? It sounds like Arrow's ready to go.
So Arrow needs about eight weeks to get the bins. Um, there, there was a, there's a shortage. They checked how, what's the earliest that they could get the bins. And um, then, you know, get them out, they could get them out in September. You know, that's, a lot of people are cutting their yard and everything in the fall. Um. There's no, there's no easy way for them to service walkers, customers. Or to bill them. Um. And so it's just, we, and we've had that conversation, you know, if they sent a truck out, could they get it all? And it's just, um. They don't have the, they have not been able to get the information they need in order to even do. The analysis.
The information they need from Walker?
Correct.
Is that right? I, is it, so could, could we say, let's go eight weeks? Arrow gets these ordered, gets them planned for their customers. Now they've got eight weeks to get it figured out with Walker.
So Arrow really hasn't been the, I mean, Arrow's working with Walker to even see if Arrow has an extra truck. That Walker could use in order to do this stuff, like they've, they've gone really above and beyond what I would expect to see. And I've worked with a lot of waste, you know, companies. And they're, they're really trying to figure out something. And um. You know, they have some data. Walker's been able to get them some data, but they don't, they just, they haven't been able to get the data that they need. And we've tried to get them data too, but our data is limited as well. So it is, um. But we're kind of reaching an inflection point where we're going to have to receive assurances and believe that it's going to happen by the deadline.
Because right now the community is, we, we're at the mercy of Walker essentially then. To, to get the data, to get the stuff that they need to get the, the trucks, whatever material to work out a plan with Arrow. If Walker's not delivering, then we could be waiting forever.
Right, so at that point, we're, you know, there's a point where we're going to have to look at the franchise agreement. And, and whether the work can be performed.
And my next question was, can we look at that now before the.
Where that, that is happening.
Okay.
So again, like. Um, this situation is what it is, but you know, my job is to present you with all of your legal options. And then, and then your job is to decide what legal option is best for the city.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Okay. I think, is there any more questions?
Nope, I think, well, I'll charity and might.
Okay, so this is, this is a little off topic, but since the community is growing and I know this has been brought up numerous times throughout the history of Estacada. But I'm just curious, is there a way we could get gas, natural gas out to Estacada? Especially since the community is growing. I don't, I don't know what, I don't, cannot remember what the roadblocks were in the past, but. So it's money?
Yeah, it was, it was going to be um, I, somewhere in like the. Hundred, hundred million dollar range to get it from. To get gas from Bo, boring, I think is where it.
Thirteen and a half miles out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we need to hit to be able to get natural gas.
Yeah.
But at the time, natural gas had quite a few customers. Now because of certain laws and Oregon, cities have changed their mind, natural gas is looking for new customers, so.
We should reach out again.
The conversation could be had.
Mm-hmm.
Conversation should be had. The P G and E's got monopoly on the winter.
Everything.
Yeah, for heat, essentially outside of the individuals that are, their house set up for propane as well. That, I mean, that's why they can run and get away with a twenty-five percent increase on their profits in two years. There's no, there's no competition to them. So I mean, I think we do it and plus, what could that do for our industrial park? If that would really open the doors on being able to bring new co, new businesses in as well, if there's natural gas remedies available for some of the companies. We want to attract going forward anyway. And that was one of the criteria for natural gas. He said, you give us one customer in your industrial park that uses this much natural gas, we'll give it to you. So. That was before Milwaukee canceled their whole plan though, right?
Yep, that was before.
So I mean, we have some things going for us.
Right, so I've, I've worked with attorneys from Northwest Central Gas in the past, so I'll check my emails and, and um. Figure out who's over there now and get in touch with them.
Cool. And John Legarza too, might have some contacts.
Yeah.
Reach out, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more question.
Mine was a quick one. Just what was the loan amount used? The number just doesn't seem to be adding up. What was the loan amount used for the eight million dollar savings? If it's a one percent, if it's at least thirty million, that's three million in the first year and then carrying it over thirty years. I just, was a, that's been a very small loan amount that was, one percent was applied to?
The, like the total loan amount we were calculating on was about forty-one million.
So that's four point one million in savings in the first year and it's only eight over thirty?
Um, let me, let me talk to you about the numbers on that, because it was, because we're only going to be paying about a million dollars of interest a year. Um, according to our calculations, but I don't want to talk out of, you know, unless Elena has hard numbers. I don't have hard numbers in my head, but. Um.
No, Sadie did the amortization schedule, um, and so she has.
Of a point discount or a one percent discount?
So it would be, but to potentially be looking at, right now it's two point four or five percent. So potentially looking at up to one percent less, so up to one point four or five percent. And it's not, we don't even, we don't even know yet what the percentage will be.
Okay. All right, I was curious.
Right, I know, it's, it's like, it's a cliffhanger thing, because.
Yeah, just, I wish I had answers, because I keep asking questions and then the answers are clear as mud.
Yeah, so we will get more answers and bring that back to you.
Okay.
But yeah.
All right, so now you're at the fun part of this. Let's go into the uh, public hearing for state, state share revenues. We'll close the city council and go into the state shared revenues. Um, Budget Officer Wagner will kind of fill us in.
Yes, you want to open the public, read the statement to open the public hearing? And, or I could say, this first, this, the public hearing is a requirement to receive the state shared revenue funds that we discussed during the May fourteenth. Budget committee hearing and we must hold the public hearing and allow public comment in order to receive the funds, so.
Yeah, and we must use their language, which they actually requires to cut.
Yeah, she didn't give me the reading then.
Yes.
I'm blind.
She, oh, don't, I thought you had it over there.
Oh, I have the, the opening for state shared revenues. And then.
This is, yes, this is the one, I want to open the public hearing to discuss. This is what you read at this.
This one, yeah.
Yes.
And we have to use this exact language for when we're closing, right?
Right, when we get down to the resolution.
Okay.
Okay, and I will now ask the budget officer.
Could you read the, or do you read the statement? Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I will now open, I already read that, just.
I was so short, I, okay, sorry about that.
That's right.
All right, so as I stated, that we have to have this public hearing in order to um, be allowed to receive the funds. And so I don't believe we had anybody sign up ahead of time. Is there anybody here who wanted to?
It's no request forms and.
Nope, all right, so that.
And any questions from council before we move on with this? No, okay, so I will now.
Close that.
Close the state shared public hearing and reopen the city council. And then the next one is the city budget hearing script, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I will now open the public hearing to discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget for the city of Estacada. And I will now ask Budget Officer Wagner to.
All right, so the budget that is presented tonight for adoption was um, considered by the budget committee on May fourteenth. And it was approved. There was one change made to it, um, to increase the beginning fund balance. And then to add uh, um, an expenditure into the uh, for police. And other than that, it was adopt, uh, approved as presented. And so that is what is brought here tonight and we're here to hear if there's any public comment about that.
Okay, great. Do I have, uh, I have no request forms. Do I have any questions from council on that? No, okay, I will now close the city budget public hearing script. And we are moving into council business.
All right.
So, first thing on council business, speed bump installation policy discussion.
And I probably should have put just an update on here rather than a discussion, but you can discuss it with me if you would like. Um, I did, as you heard earlier, um, I, as, as council's request. We've been working on developing a speed bump or speed hump installation policy. Um, and this is, I'm just updating, I'm part of the process. The uh, traffic and public safety committee are reviewing one possible um, a policy that it's one that. It's a policy and application that Oregon City uses. We also, um, I reviewed one from Sandy. It seemed a little cumbersome and might be difficult for, um. I mean, it was great, had a lot of information and everything, but it might be more difficult for the community to utilize it. And so um, they're looking at the Oregon City uh, policy and application. Uh, traffic and public safety will come back with uh, some recommendations. And then the D E I C, I also asked them about the, you know, because in Oregon City, uh, a neighborhood can pay to have. A speed hump installed. Uh, a neighborhood can pay to have a speed hump installed if it meets all the criteria. And I don't. I feel slightly uncomfortable with that. I feel again, like the city should be paying for these. But if a neighborhood wants to, um, put their funds together and move themselves to the top of the list and get it done right away. Um, now obviously if there's like, we have a new crosswalk going in. And we, you know, for safety purposes, there needs to be a speed. I've seen, uh, this is where I've seen speed humps very effective where there's a crosswalk. And then as you approach the crosswalk, there's a speed hump on this side and come in, there's a speed. So everybody's slowing down as they're coming up to that crosswalk. Um, if there is something like that, that was a change that we needed to, to, um, prioritize, the city could do that. But I just wanted the, the DEI committee also to take a look at. The equity issues, if people are allowed to pay to have them installed. So those two committees are coming back. And then we will, um, consult again with the city engineer on standards. I also included a link in your packet. That is a safety handbook for local roads and it provides standards, um, because the traffic and public safety committee did mention, obviously there are standards out there. They are not in the, um, MUTCD, which I can't remember what that stands for. And it's a manual for traffic control devices. Um. They are not included in there from what I could find. Um, and so this, this, um, handbook has some good standards in it. That, and it's an Oregon based, um. Books booklet. So I did include also in the packets some questions that I was asking feed, uh, feedback on. And so we'll just try to wrap this up in the next, in the month of June, get feedback from those committees and then, um, bring a policy back. To you all. Do you have questions or, um, other comments? I know.
Okay. I.
Um, were you able to find out the cost per speed bump?
Yes. I asked our engineers and they're estimating probably 2,500 to $3,500. Um, I didn't call like a peeping company, which is who I'm assuming would do it. Um, but the engineer's estimate was about 25 to $3,500. So, yeah.
Some of the considerations that we were looking at as well, being mentioned factors. So. When the fire chief was asked about their opinions on this, their response was, do you know how expensive suspension on our fire trucks is to maintain? So that was the consideration as to why, another consideration as to why our community. Why they're not in support of speed bumps because it would potentially increase their maintenance bill. Which is another thing I find absolutely ridiculous. I, I understand that things are expensive to maintain, but. We owe it to this community to keep people safe and to be ahead of the curve. So one of the things we've been looking at and that we were asking staff. To bring us is specifically, there's other state, there's other cities in this state that have speed bumps that have fire departments. Say Portland or whatnot within the communities that have figured out, uh, an average fire trucks axle width is. Eight feet or whatever it is, you know, I know it's shorter than that, but just humor me, right? So we could figure out a way to span this so that we can please the fire department, meet them in the middle of something that allows egress. Or that they could travel at a little bit higher rate of speed without being super slowed down or whatever. Whatnot. So the, these are the, the issues we're having. An eight percent grade was another consideration. It was looking at what factors does that have? Does that come into play for like the winter when we have like say a severe ice storm? Where if we had a speed bump on the hill, like say four, does that create an issue and is with the speed bump being there? So. What other kind of deterrents could we do to help say if we can't get away with a speed bump on a slope? What other deterrents do we have as far as, uh? Now Melanie's saying that there's been a law change. So now we can actually bring in photo radar. Within city limits and address some of these hills and some of these other places that we can't capture with the speed bump to nicely suggest that people to slow down. So we, we have alternative options on the table now as well, but just so that you guys are aware, this was where the conversation was. Really going back and forth on that. And then on the comment, I wasn't clear earlier and I want to be clear. When I was saying like. For the city to pay for it, what I, what I'm saying is there's going to be certain neighborhoods that are, that are been established for a longer period of time that they won't meet that criteria where. In their language of the code that was presented to. The committee, it was essentially saying, if they could get X amount of their neighborhood to vote on it, then they would be. Applicable to be able to get a speed bump. And then they could say then pay for it themselves to install it. And what, where I was going with that is if. We're gonna do this right, I think in the common areas. Within town and within the development that already exists that we missed, we do that. Now there's going to be certain streets that are just. Smaller and narrower that they typically wouldn't have one. I could see, to be clear, where you would justify it saying. If you were to do it, then that would be on you in that sense. But if it's a. One of our new streets or our new developments or it's. You know, I, I just don't see pushing that cost onto the residents that bought a house that on something that. Quite frankly, it just got missed. I mean, that's, that's, again, that's my personal opinion. And that was some of the conversation going back. So. I'm sorry to take your time on this. I just wanted to clarify more on the speed bump situation. So they are really. My recommendation to the committee was to really take this home and. Spend time and come back when you can have a discussion with points, like written down points, rather than go back and forth on something that they're seeing for the first time in the left. In 10 minutes of looking over it and trying to jot down notes, spend, spend a month looking at this. Come back, bring it to us, and then let's attack this from a perspective where we can do this right the first time. So we're not revisiting costs later on and so forth for the community.
Yeah. Sounds good.
As I, as I've chatted with some folks about this, I feel like there's a very strong pro speed bump and a very strong no speed bump. Group out there as well too. And, and in your, in the packet, you've got a list of questions that have been proposed to the commissions. And I think number two is pretty important. Um, and it's what other methods of traffic calming do you think would be effective rather than speed bumps? And are there any other traffic calming measures that should be included in this policy? I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a standard to put these in. And we know that it's going to be something that's going to be, um, kind of controversial with some folks as well too. If we could bring before them, kind of like, uh. Counselor Metcalf had said, we, there are other methods out there. These are the ones that have been considered. Um, you know, here it says, what other methods do you think? Would be effective other than speed bumps? I, I'd like to know what ones were considered by the groups as well too, so that we can say, hey, we've looked at everything. Here are the pros of these, the cons of these, um, so that when we come down to speed bumps, you know, we could, we could say we've looked through this thoroughly. And these are the ones that we, this is why. We feel like speed bumps are the best. And I've got down also, you know, the Oregon city thing, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty big. Uh, just breezing through that, but it does look like it pulls from the, that, the standards that you had mentioned as well too. And, um. I, I'd like to know as they're looking at these. What, what are the good ones from this Oregon city model? Um, what are the good points and, and what are the points that we should avoid as well too? And why? So those are the things I'd like to look for from the commissions as they come back to us.
Great. Thank you for that. Cause there are, there are some drawbacks to speed humps. Um, snow plowing is one of the drawbacks. Um, you can't snow plow over a speed hump. Do they impede drainage? That has to be considered. I gotta, uh, it went around the city manager listserv and people who've had. Um, more experience. Some of them were, are neutral and some of them have very strong feelings that it's, um. They can be problematic. You know, how do they affect commercial and delivery vehicles even as you're going into a neighborhood? Um, and a lot of the roads that. We've heard complaints about recently, um, they are on a significant slope. And so if there's other ways, I do feel like fourth avenue has that pinch point that's supposed to slow. But by the time you get to the, you know, you either go past it and you got the whole hill ahead or you're coming down, then you slow down at the bottom. But, um. So there, there needs to be some additional, I think. Other methods would be great to consider. What do we think would work? Um, and then we have, we've also turned our, um, traffic court over to justice court. Uh, which will make it, um. I, maybe it'll feel a little more official to folks. I'm not sure. Rather than just coming to court here, I don't know. Just let people know, you know, we're. For a variety of reasons, we did that, but it could let people know that this is a serious concern from community members from the council. When you're in town, we want you obeying the speed limit. And I know that our, um, our deputies are, are ramping up on that also.
Yeah. Just from a, from a legal risk perspective, we need to make sure that we're not, um, creating a dangerous condition. And so one of the reasons that there are the, um. The slope is because, you know, a speed bump can launch a car as well. So it's just a matter of being really careful and people understanding. Like maybe they'd want to speed bump on the steep hill, but if that means they can't plow, that means we can't plow the hill. Then we're, you know, for a few days out of the year, we're making something more dangerous than it, than it might need to be made. So I think as long as people understand the pros and the cons associated with the thing, then, um. But I have encountered this issue before and people do have extremely strong opinions on it.
And then, you know, as I, I, I've explored this throughout cities close by, cause I thought, okay, I'm going to go check out. A few cities just to make sure that we're not jumping the gun here as far as speed bumps go, but. Fourth street, I can understand that being a concern, you know, because that is a thoroughfare. I've seen it iced and it could be a major problem. But in neighborhoods such as all the neighborhoods up there, Campanella, they're flat. The speed in which people drive through there is tremendous. Now going through other cities. That is where I saw speed bumps in flat areas where there were neighborhoods built up. There was speed bumps right when you come off the main street. So I come off of Burnside, I go into the neighborhood, not more than a half a block in, there's the first set of speed bumps. And it continues on as you go through the neighborhoods. Um, I think that's really the focus here is keeping our kids safe in the neighborhoods. Not so much your thoroughfares, your fourth street, you know, these places, that's not really what I think is the focus here. My focus. Or widely the focus is of everybody is the neighborhoods being safer. I know on my street, it's a private road. The FedEx guy goes 60 miles an hour down a private road that has a dead end. You know, he's part of the problem. So the delivery trucks can be part of the problem. Um, so I would hope that's what we look at in the speed bump conversation.
Sure.
Okay. So to, to your point, Paul, what's the, what's that main road that goes up into your neighborhood that?
Cascadia Ridge.
Cascadia Ridge is, is a, a steep hill. And that's one of the roads that is a concern for speed. Um, it's steep going up and then it's, and then it's, uh, going down the other direction also, you know, also steep. So that's one. You know, one thoroughfare that is a main, that is a big concern for the community that, uh, we really need to maybe find an alternate. Um, alternate way to slow the speed down. But, um, one thing that, you know, has been brought to us before. And I've noticed that because I traveled, I traveled the roads. So when we put speed bumps on Shafford, it turned Pierce into a racetrack. Um, we then, you know, it, it started to, it started to slow down. People started using Shafford more. Um, then we put stop, we put the stop signs back in on Shafford also. And it all, and then it, it made Pierce back into a racetrack and, and. The thing for me is that that's, there's two schools on that street. And that just, you know, and I see him, I see these, I see him every morning, you know, when I, I, when I turn on Shafford. People go down to Pierce, turn on Pierce and they're, they're turning out in front of me on, back onto Shafford after the stop signs in the, in the speed humps. So that's something to, you know, consider also these main, main roads going through, they might not be a artery, you know, main artery, but. They're the roads people were using, especially during this, you know, this construction. Everybody was using Shafford and, you know, the, those roads to go from. Uptown to the highway. So, um, just something else to keep into consideration. I, I love the idea. I, I supported the idea of the speed, speed humps. And I supported the idea of the stop signs, but just seeing what that did to Pierce. Just kind of makes me, you know, think if we're going to do it, we need to, you know, we need to do it. Cause it just changes, it changes what, you know, the other roads, the traffic that the other roads around that road see. So.
I, I think. I mean, uh, this is a great discussion, but let's let the commission do its job and come to us, like you said, Paul, with. What they think. And then from there we can hammer out. What that looks like. Ultimately, we're the end authority on the code as it goes in, right? I mean, and. Everybody up here agreeably is trying to do their best job for interpreting what. Whatever citizens they've heard from or fielded complaints from what that is. But the, the underlying issue here is that the town needs to slow down. And we need to be proactive rather than reactive in, in this. And so. I mean, Melanie, thank you for getting on this and making it a priority and getting them stuff. Um, the commission I know is going to bring you guys back stuff. Pretty quickly. They just wanted to spend actual time going through that. And I appreciate all of, like hearing all of your guys' points, but. At the end of the day, also, I mean, the other alternative is we ask these cops to really hammer down on tickets. So now what my fear with that, which I'm glad that we do that. I mean, if you're speeding, you're speeding, that's on you. My fear with that is it's gonna, you're not gonna catch the guys that are every morning doing 60 miles an hour down Shafford. Racing. You're gonna get the one person that happens to be late to school and is doing 32. And the cops are like, well, you guys have asked us no mercy, boom, boom, boom. And so now we're gonna start taking the people that really aren't necessarily the issue here. Although how, how do you measure it? I understand that. But. So that's my fear in, okay, just using police law enforcement. Same with the radar trade. We put that out a couple of times. People are gonna learn the hard lesson. Melanie's gonna get some. Get some phone calls of why they're getting tickets in the mail. We're gonna generate some revenue out of it, which is great. Cause if you look at our, if you look at the past to now, even in the last few years, I think we've lost. So five or $6,000 in revenue. It, it was a, it was a decent amount of revenue lost. Since they've kind of backed off on issuing citations for speeding and they're getting ready to present that. So we got some things that are gonna deter, but. I think rather than forced by ticket and another financial implication, I like the idea of. Doing something that just, we're no longer suggesting you slow down or hoping that you don't get caught by the police if you choose not to. Take, adhere to our suggestions, but here's a way that we can physically say. We've showed up for our community to slow it down. Now I'm not saying it has to be like the school speed bumps, but I mean, we need to intervene here. This has been brought to us how many times since I've been on in September? I keep hearing about my cat, my cat. I heard about that multiple times and people felt that. I'm not necessarily the most empathetic towards animals, but. I could feel when people are concerned about their children. I could feel when I read in comments. That there's people chasing somebody around the neighborhood because they got flipped off and they're speeding through. I'm gonna get out of names because I can't, can't remember exact neighborhoods, but this is all stuff we're seeing more of, like aggressive behavior, things like that. It's time to make them slow down in our communities in smaller assets. I mean. Regardless of how, but I'd like to give the account, the com- committee the chance. To do what we've asked them to do within their charter and bring us something before we get too headway on this.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to see, uh, a cost analysis difference between the paved in speed humps and the riveted in. Speed bumps to see if there's a, you know, what the cost difference is between, you know, the, the speed bumps that they're like a, a. Solid, like a rubberized and they get, uh, riveted into the, the street. Um, compared to actually paving them into the streets.
I am not.
That was more of a private drive.
Yeah. I am not sure if they can be used on a public street, but let me check on that.
That's the.
Yeah, I could. Thank you for that discussion, everybody.
Yeah. Any more on the discussion before we move on?
I'd just like to reiterate for the community that's gonna watch this. There is a speed campaign coming. They're going to start issuing citations for speeding in town. Consider this your warning. It's coming soon.
Kind of reminds me of Smokey the bear. We're coming for you. All right. Moving along, we are at ordinance 2024 dash 004 and ordinance amending chapters 13.04, water service of Estacada municipal code. So I'll let you speak to that.
I, this is the, the attached code, um, incorporates issues that were presented in the draft water management conservation plan, which have been really headed up and spearheaded by Elena. So. If you want to talk about that, we do have draft code in here. If it is, um, presented in the way that the council is ready to adopt it, we can. Uh, but there might be other alternatives as well.
Yeah. So there was two things we brought back, um, in April. One was looking at, uh, water conservation plan. So it has, has triggers and actions. So when we get to a certain level. Then these would be our actions. And the second portion of that was, um, that our code did not have anything that required people to repair leaks. And so both of those, uh, changes have been incorporated in here. I know you had some questions at the last meeting, um, and that I wanted to answer. One of them was, uh, when did we reach level one last year? Cause I know when you were looking over that big old spreadsheet, it was kind of hard to find. It was. August 14th, 15th and 16th. So one time last year we reached level one and it would have only stayed in that level one for those three days. Cause right after that we dropped out. Um, and then, uh, something we didn't necessarily talk about last time that I, I wanted to make sure you understood is that this. This triggers are only triggered if we reach these levels. So we're trying to find. This, this triggers are only triggered if we reach these levels. So we're trying to find many ways. To decrease the water usage, so we're not increasing the production to that level. So things like. Um, what Steve presented earlier, also we saw a significant amount of water loss or water theft. Uh, so that's something that Public Works is addressing this summer, increasing um. At some of the new construction to make sure, but we're gonna have Public Works driving around, checking on people to make sure that they're actually. Taking water from their metered water and not just from a hydrant. Um, and then we put into the budget. Extra funds for leak repair, which would also help decrease the water usage too.
All right.
Okay. So you have some alternatives here. To um, approve, you could only look at the curtailment language. Um, or you could just a- address the leaks or, so you wanna go down to page. Um, one sixteen is the ordinance and then uh, where the changes in the code start is one eighteen. That um, on one eighteen, I don't know, do you have questions or do you, have you already? Do you know what you wanna do? I mean, happy to discuss it more of it.
No, I'm fine with it. Uh, somebody wanna make the motion?
Well, I, I've, I've got a question here or a thought. I'm, I'm fine with the leaks. I think that's, that's a good adjustment. Um. The, the one part in here at stage one. We've got homeowner associations who find the residence for their landscape or lawn failing to be green or water will be penalized based on provisions. Um, listed out there thirteen oh four two fifty. Um, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's enough. I don't know if that makes. Uh, an impact at all, because they could, the, it, last year then, we would have three days where they couldn't find. Well, then on the fourth day, they would find. You know, it, it doesn't seem like that would do anything and uh, being somebody that was watched very closely by the HOA and having fines threatened to me. The problem happened earlier in the year when I was out of town for a week and damage was done to the lawn and there's no recovery. So I think if we've got a stretch in here of, of, you know, four or five days, five days of stage one, two, three, four. Then lawns are gonna suffer and, and property owners are gonna have a hard time recovering from that. And if they've got HOAs breathing down their neck, then they'll do like I did, which is in August, then my uh, water usage went up thirty percent. Just to try to keep things happy, because that threat continued throughout the month of uh, September as well too. I think it should say something like, you know, once we hit a stretch of, th- this is arbitrary, but five days of, of stage one, two, three or four. Then HOAs can't charge for watering or can't find. Um, residents till the summer watering season's over, which we can identify is, is end of summer or end of September. I was wondering if thoughts on that one? Is that something that we could do?
So, we can't, because HOAs are um, essentially private contracts between residents. What? We can, we can essentially find them for fining people. We can't prevent them from fining. Um, and you know, Melanie and I have talked about this a bunch and this is something where. I think it would really make sense to see if. To, to what, if they, if, if we can get them to recognize that this is an issue. To what extent will they just cooperate with us? So like, are there triggers that they would be agreeable to? Um, and I get particularly for developers that are building phase two. And have people going through phase one, how they, they want it to look, everyone's yards to look really. Green and healthy and all that, but you know, it, it. Is there some point where if there isn't a phase three, four, or five where they're built out? That they would be willing to work with us on this? And then the, the other piece too is that with the tiered water rates, if there, if the HOA itself is watering common areas. Um, would they, it would be in their financial best interest to cut back. Um, so. I'm, I can craft what I term like police powers. But I really, if there are ways that we can get more dialogue and collaborate with them so that. Cause we really don't have the staff to go around. Monitoring. Um, and I, I think if. You know, it were, maybe there are other, like if we're posting the citywide water use. You know, every day and people see us getting near that tier. Would we ask people voluntarily, like if your address ends in an odd number, would you agree to? Not water on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday or. Um, and see if we can get voluntary compliance just because people wanna help out the community. Cause what Melanie and I were talking about is like, I've noticed that people in Estacada don't enjoy being told what to do. And um, that if they're told what to do, oftentimes they're like, no. Whereas um. Where people in Estacada can see the community good in something, they're, they're all about doing it. So it's, in my mind, in this community, um, A, we're all in this together and. We need to recharge our reservoirs and this is what this is all about, is like making sure that our reservoirs can get recharged. Would you be willing to, would, you know, this group of people be, be willing to. Cut back on these days and then even numbers, maybe it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And see if, I think we might get better results from that than having some sort of punitive finding system. And now if there really are just like water wasters, um, then, you know, maybe, maybe the finding. Is something we'll need to do because that's the only way we get compliance, but um. I'd just kinda like to explore whether we have some collaborative opportunities first. And, and I've sensed that kind of across the board on the council, people are really reluctant to deploy these. Kind of police powers, what I'd say about water. So I, I would just. I mean, I think that the language that's in there now gives us a little bit of flexibility, but really appealing to. People's sensitive community and, and we don't wanna end up in a dire situation. Would, would you help us? Come up with solutions or what, what could your HOA agree to if we hit this trigger? Um, you know, would you give them like a week or two? Yeah.
Will this language give us the flexibility to deal with it, whether the. It was during the conservation period where we're trying to cut back, that the damage done, say. A lawn dies in that five day stretch and they're getting fined for it two weeks later. Does this language give us the freedom to find them if they're finding that resident? Of an HOA?
Um. Yeah, I think I ultimately you're the ones that would interpret the code, but I think you could plausibly interpret it that way. And then the other thing I've been thinking about is. Going forward, cause it's the county that reviews HOA CCNRs. But as a, as a land use condition of approval, I think that we could. Tell them that as a condition of approving their subdivision, that they're not allowed to. Find these um, um, owners for, for not watering. Um, and, and that's. Then there, it's not about the contract between the members. It's about their approval criteria with us. And because we have this court tail and issue and because we've been seeing a lot of growth, I think there's a nexus between our condition. And um, and I think it's definitely roughly proportionate to the benefit that they're receiving. So I think going forward. That's something that we could use so that other people don't find themselves in this.
Is there anything stopping us from doing both, the collaboration with the community and doing, putting in protective? The protective measure, cause I mean, I like what you're saying, Paul. I mean, I think we have something hard line there that lets the community know.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
Have your back in this essence, but. At the same time, like here's us also asking, please work with us to help. Prevent this issues going forward so that we don't have to come to you with, here's a new tiered rate or whatever for water consumption. I mean, is, there's. There's gotta be a way we can do both, correct?
Yeah, so the, the enforcement of any of our ordinances is discretionary and it's really about what the council priorities are. So. Like our council said, speeding's a priority. So now we're looking at like borrowing someone's photo radar and, and all these other things. So if. If you instruct us to look towards collaborative things and to, to do this sort of enforcement as a last resort. That's what we would do. And if, if they're totally unwilling to collaborate with us, then you know, we come back to you and say, look, we used our best efforts, but. We might have to look at more of an enforcement. So uh, we could use this as like a carrot and stick approach.
Yeah, we, we communicated with them last year and I think that a lot of the things that we asked them for. Would be the things that we're asking for again this year. So we asked them to adjust sprinkler heads so they weren't watering their concrete or asphalt. Uh, to change their watering day. So even numbered addresses, wa- water Monday, Wednesday, Friday and odd Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Not to water between the hours of seven AM and eight PM. And then we asked each neighborhood to alternate their watering times. So that it would decrease the peak time of day. So we asked um, uh, this one, I think is Campanella. We asked if they would water from six to nine AM and then I think we asked Cascadia Ridge to water in the evening. I, I don't remember the exact times. But we asked them to alternate the watering times in order for us to decrease that peak time. So it's not everybody watering at like four AM.
Alright, so it sounds like this is, this is good to go if you're ready to um, to adopt it. And you'd, then you'd come back for a second reading again. Um, and then we could get it and it would be in place thirty days later. So it could be in place by. Or be active by July twenty-fourth, that would be.
So I moved to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four and ordinance amending the chapter thirteen dot oh four. Water service of the Estacada municipal code.
Yeah, first on the table, do I have a second?
Second?
First and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next I have resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four, a resolution uh. Relating to municipal service, state shared revenues. So can I have a motion on the floor?
Is there specific wording on this one?
That is on page sixteen. That's the stage. I'm gonna make sure I'm in the right one. Um, nope, sorry, I'm, I'm up too high into the, the.
Mine's.
I am not seeing. Mine's going right to the water.
Mine's going to the water too.
Okay. Um, I think you, you can just go to the um, resolution for state shared revenues and move to approve and read the title of the. The resolution. Which is page one twenty-nine.
So the, the motion would be, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four. Dash zero zero four, a resolution relating to municipal services, state shared revenues.
I so move.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
I second.
Uh, first and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven, a resolution amending the budget. Uh, making appropriations, imposing the tax and categorizing the taxes for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five city budget. Oh, can I have a motion on this one as well?
I moved to approve resolution two zero two four dash zero zero seven, a resolution adopt, adopting the budget, making appropriations. Imposing the tax and categorizing the taxes for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five city budget.
Yeah, yeah, first, do I have a second?
Second.
I have first and second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for that. We are at the next uh, citizen and community group comment. Alright. I got one here and then you, Blama, you wanted to put another one in? Alright. Hey, first off, I have Terry Dobbs.
Um, in regard to um, speed hump, speed bumps. Uh, you know, it's, the, the discussion seems to go into, first of all, the mechanics of the item. Which would be code and criteria. The second part seems to be infused into where do they go? The second part of where do they go det- is determined from my perspective on the neighborhood, the people. But the first part of the speed hump or speed bump should be established for wherever they go. So the first question I would say takes a priority over where they go. But the mechanics of the spacing, the distance between them for a truck or vehicle to move around them. The slope, these are mechanical things. So if we refer back to Stafford Road. Certainly there's a code for that because it exists. So why don't we just use that code? To base the humps on. They're already there, they're put in. They work for the people in that neighborhood, they work. But the second part of the question, which is where do they go, that's up for debate. And eh, in my line of uh, work, you have a tool belt. You have many tools in that belt. And I think the city needs to have other tools other than a speed hopper or a speed bump. But before it goes any further to the application of where it goes, in what neighborhood or what people are requesting. You should have the code and criteria down for them. That exists already. And it exists in the town on Stafford Road. So is that an example of what could come for the future? I would say yes. Because if you ask the people on the street that live there, it functions. And the reason whoever sponsored that or got it on their street. Got done what it was supposed to accomplish, which was slow vehicles down. So first question, the mechanics, which should be noted first. Second question, open for debate on where they go. These are just thoughts. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanna make a quick comment on the, on the HOAs and the fines and all that. Uh, a creative solution may be that uh, they have all natural like plant or grass paints or dyes. You know, that you can spray on your lawn to give the appearance of being green, even though it's dead grass. So maybe there's like a program we could build with the city or something like with Public Works potentially like, you know, if you, if they, we know you're in a strict HOA and you need. Like a green lawn, you know, we could, maybe there's like a program where we could like tell people paint their lawns. That way we save water while also keeping the curb appeal of green grass. Or like even if like people within the community themselves like got together like with a landscape company and like. Maybe they get a discount and like they have a company come out and service the whole area. And that way we could. Say, you could save uh, water without, without people getting fines in the first place. So. That's just a creative solution that you may be able to use if you live in the HOA.
Alright, I don't have any more uh, request forms there, so thank you for that. Um, we are now at the mayor and council reports and comments. Jerry?
Um, something I forgot earlier in my uh, committees, um, the Fourth of July parade. Um, with the Fourth of, of July parade, there's a couple of things that are gonna be different this year than uh, previous years. There's not gonna be any um. Any floats, any uh, any applications accepted day of the event. Every application for floats has to be um, submitted at, at the minimum the day before. Um, the uh, roads, the side roads that will be closed will uh, will not reopen until the fl- the parade has passed on. Um, on Broadway going back. So the first road that'll open is gonna be, you know. I guess this road will be open because that's what they use, but it'll, they'll just open both sides as they're, as they're passing the side roads going up. Uh, back to the schools. Um, they're gonna be limiting the amount of vehicles or floats per. Um, company or per um. You know, per applicant, they're, they're not gonna allow like, you know, ten, ten log trucks for one logging company. Um, they're gonna be limit, limiting to the amount. They're going to be limiting to the amount because of the the turnout, the amount of people that apply to be in the parade. It's just growing every year. So they're just going to have and we don't want a six hour Fourth of July parade. So they're they're limiting the amount of floats or vehicles per applicant. But other than that, I'm really looking forward to the Fourth of July parade this year. It's going to be fun.
Uh, thank you for those of you that decided to attend in person. I appreciate seeing you here. And thanks for the great discussion here now on my take from the speed bumps from here and the committee going back and forth on it as well. I do appreciate that. I thought that was a really good conversation between everybody. And I just want to say thank you because I I do believe everybody up here, I mean, I do mean everybody genuinely cares about trying to do the best we can for the people of this community. And I appreciate that. It's one of the things that has made me love living here is that we can come together to get things done and have our backs, each other's back in times of need, especially like with the fires and different things like this. This community is really what sold me. I'm proud to be raising kids in it, you know? That being said, I just want to put this comment out there that the voter turnout was absolutely garbage and it was disgusting to see how many people chose to sit out regardless of what side of the fence you are on. I think that part of the things that we are up here trying to help prevent for this community or help keep your vision of what Estacada looks like comes down to participating at county and state level and who's going to hear our voice or who's going to align with our values as a rural community as well. So I don't care to what side of the coin you fell on for the school bond or you didn't. What I care about is that you show up and you express your voice in a format that matters, that drives decisions. So I'd like everybody to please consider in November on this next one, showing up for your community where it counts, where you can really make an impact. And I'd just like to really comment on seeing just a change there. We can do everything we can here, but it does no good if we can't come together as a community and vote to put things through where it matters at higher levels as well. So anyway.
Just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Thank you to the staff for all the work that went into preparing for the meeting and hope everyone's enjoying this nice weather.
Uh, thank you, everyone, for being here. I really appreciate each and every one of you. This past weekend was Beaver State Fling. It's a disc golf tournament tournament that brings professionals here every year to Milo McKeever. Milo's rated one of the best courses in the world. And I saw a lot of people there. Christie's was there as a vendor. But one thing I didn't see was anything promoting Estacada. I didn't see any visit Estacada stopped there. And I highly encourage that because on the online coverage that they do, they do nothing but talk about how beautiful and wonderful Estacada is. And so that was a little disappointing, but I was so nice to see everyone there and enjoying disc golf.
Interesting. I heard from somebody else the same same thing about that too. So it'd be great to see Estacada participating in the future on those. A a positive here this past week, I've heard from a couple of different parents regarding their students being a part of various commissions within the city of Estacada. So that word has gotten out. It sounds like teachers have talked to their classes about it. Kids are bringing it back to their parents as well, too. So the commissions, I encourage you, make sure you're ready for the kids coming in. Because the words out, I've been asked, which is the best commission to be on? They're all great. They're all great. So words out, but otherwise appreciate the the prep that staff gives us for this. Thank you so much. And thank you for the input as well here too, from the folks out there.
To that, Paul, I have councillor councillor McElroy and I had a opportunity to meet with the high school student council and sort of hopefully get the word out to them and get them excited. And I'm I'm really, I'm really hopeful that some of those kiddos will come out and participate in one of the committees or the commissions. I had hoped to hear back from the school district regarding the bond because I wanted to get some concrete numbers as to how many people who were eligible to vote, how many showed up. I got numbers on how many ballots were turned in, but that's that's found on the county website. But hopefully Wednesday night, when I go to the school board meeting, I want to get some concrete numbers because I know that the voter participation was extremely low. And that was really, really what disappointed me most in the community. It wasn't the fact that you voted yes or no. I don't care about that. I mean, I do. But I just want people to vote. You know, I I typed up this whole thing where I would essentially be giving a civics lesson on you know, the history of voting in this country and how many different amendments were made through the past two hundred years in order to get to where we are as people who can vote in this country. When it first started out, it was only white male landowners who were twenty one years of age. And then it went into, you know, then then black males were eligible to vote and then female. And it just went on and on and on until finally we are at this point where everybody who is the age of eighteen, as an adult, who is a citizen of this country can vote. And it really disappoints me that people are not using that privilege that we have to make their voices heard. And it just it took a lot of hard work from many people over many years to get to where we are. And it frustrates me when I hear oh, it doesn't matter. My voice doesn't count or they just they just completely dismiss it. I was too busy. I didn't have time to fill out the form. If you don't make your voice heard, changes can't be made. And then you can't gripe about what gets put in place or what leaders get put in place. So I really encourage people, like councillor Metcalf said, to with this coming November, please take a few minutes to just fill out your ballot. And honestly, guys, I really want people to look at the policies and not the person. Look at the policies this year and not the person. Okay, I'm not telling you how to vote. Just please read your read your packet and do vote. That's all I have. Oh, and thanks for everybody being here.
It's great to hear so much emphasis on voting. Um, I was gonna go with that, but that shot in the foot. So we'll just we'll go with the the veterans. I attended the veteran ceremony this last week and it was delightful. It was good to see Jesse Lee, who sang the National Anthem and Tony Longrue also sang. And the fact that there were so many people that turned out for that event. It showed me that America cares. They just forgotten. So that alone should give you hope. But that aside, I also want to emphasize the voting. Doesn't matter which side you sit on. It doesn't matter the end game. What matters is that you vote, that you care enough to step up and speak and say what it is you'd like to see. That is your right. So do it. Do it. We're up here fighting the fight. But, you know, you may have a different opinion of how that should go. I want to hear it. I want to see you up here doing that. I mean, it's it's it saddens me to see it squandered, you know, and the and the and the fact that the the planet is in the serious need that it is right now more than any other time in our history proves that point. So I won't go on with that, but thank you again for joining us tonight. And you all did a great job. Thank you for that and city staff as well. So thank you. End of this meeting. Sure.
All right, we have urban